Morning, everybody. If you please stand with me, I'm going to ask Clerk Straight to lead us off in prayer.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you we can come together this morning to conduct the business of Hampshire County. We thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on us, including the good summertime rains we're having, and we'll just ask your guidance and blessing on all that's said and done this morning, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If you would remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the special meeting of the Hampshire County Commission to order Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And good morning, everybody, and welcome to our county commissioner meeting. I will start off with the minutes. Do we have?
I did not send them to you yet. So they'll be, you'll have two sets next week.
All right, so we, since being a special meeting, we'll take care of that at the regular meeting, so we won't review any minutes this morning. President's and commissioners' reports, I assume, will probably be pretty short. I know mine is. I'm going to bypass that as president. I did have several emails and phone calls on various ongoing things that we have going on, but being a special meeting for time's sake, I will bypass my president's report, but I open the floor to Commissioner Mance first, and then Commissioner Brill for any report that they would like to give at this time.
Thank you, President Eglinger. I'm actually going to follow suit as well as the majority of what I've been working on will be addressed later.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mance, Commissioner Brill, do you have a report for us this morning?
I do have just a quick report. President Eglinger, since of our last meeting, I did have a Parks and Recreation meeting. I just wanted to report that the Bluegrass Festival that was, had a couple weeks ago, several weeks ago, was a success again, and thanks a lot to those volunteers that make that happen. That's a pretty large event here in the county, and we appreciate the time they put into making that successful, so glad to report that was good. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the Parks and Rec Department did approve and move forward with making Nick Carroll a full-time director. His position was part-time when he was hired. They went through the proper protocol, opened the job up, and did interviews, and ended up retaining Nick as the director and keeping him on full-time. So lots of good things there. Excited to watch and see what he's going to be able to bring to the, to the Parks and Rec Department. And just let everyone know, too, that he did apply for a $2,000 grant for what is called Indoor Days, which is going to be a new program debuting this fall. They did receive those funds and are planning to start that, I believe, in November of this year. In addition, I also, as we had previously discussed, you guys had asked me to look into creating a list of commercial appraisals, appraisers for the Hampshire Center, and I have compiled that list and am going to be sharing with you guys via email later on this afternoon. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for Commissioner Brill for those updates. Looks like we can move on to our nine oh five agenda item, which is official general budget revision number one, transfer of funds to the new fiscal year.
Gentlemen, the primary reason for our meeting is this particular item, because we have to get this done and submitted to the auditor's office by the twenty-fifth of June. This is the first budget revision to the general fund for the twenty-five, twenty-six year budget, the new budget. And what it does is transfer funds that are remained from the end of last year's budget into this year, so we have operating funds. We had budgeted a million dollars to be transferred in the two ninety-nine fund, and we were actually able to transfer eight hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred twenty-one. So it's a one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollar decrease, and so we've had to make that revision by pulling out of a couple of line items in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, including a hundred thousand dollars from the county commission budget four oh one, five thousand from other buildings, it's four twenty-five, three thousand out of the contingencies fund, which is six ninety-nine, which would normally be five thousand, and then eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the nine eighty-six county commission fund. So that's what we proposed. That gets our unexpended funds transferred from the twenty-five budget to the twenty-six budget and gets us started on the, on the new operating year. So here's, here's the revision. I was going to ask. Bethany just made a note that she forgot to send to Logan, but that's, that's the whole thing right there. We don't have audio on Mr. Lance. Aaron?
Aaron stepped down.
Yep. As you said, Eric, I'm comfortable.
We did for a second.
We had a second of audio. Logan, we're still not picking you up clear.
No. No.
We've lost connection with Mr. Mance.
Okay, we temporarily lost connection with Commissioner Mance, but we still do have a quorum, so Commissioner Brill, if you would, if you choose to do so, move that we accept those fiscal year budget revisions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the request for revision to the approved budget for the revision number one, to transfer funds to the new fiscal year.
I'll second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the budget revision one presented to us by the clerk's office. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right. Should be good for a little bit.
Okay, Commissioner Mance, we just approved the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget revision that the clerk's office presented to us there. Get you updated.
Sounds good.
Okay, we will move on to our nine fifteen agenda item, which is the sink the pool funding request. To update, I had asked the clerk's office to go over the numbers for the request, and that was the, part of the discussion at our last meeting, is that we, the commission voted to look into that in more detail, and I had also spoke with the treasurer's office as well, emailed back and forth with them that day and the following days as well. Just for clarification to the public, the, the treasurer's office, from, from a commission standpoint, the treasurer's office tracks our money coming in, our clerk's office tracks our money going out. So obviously, best to work with both of those offices in, in looking at these numbers. So at this time, I would open the floor for either of those offices to present to the commission, and then I'll open the floor for discussion and questions for the commissioners.
Well, sir, since you had charged me in the last meeting, we will, we will start. And my report is that we have had a lot of expenditures in the last year, last couple of years, actually, and we have seen our reserves declining over the, over that time. Last year alone, we were asked to help and did help HCSA, the Emergency Ambulance Service, to the tune of seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars, including some funds for the construction of the building, almost three hundred fifty for that, and about four hundred and a quarter for salary draws. The, that also, in addition to that, we also supported the Development Authority by replenishing their revolving loan fund. That was a quarter million. The prior year, we had spent a hundred sixty-five thousand on their, the roof for the incubator building. So bottom line is that we've been in a, we've been drawing on our reserves, and we really have to be very careful at this point, I believe, to, as we move forward, because we do have an obligation to pay our employees and the other budgeted matters that we have set. This item comes to us outside of our budget. We've set our budget in March, and our projection was, again, as far as the unattached or unassigned funds, to be a million dollars. We thought we were being fairly conservative, and we were, but we had a lot of pressure on last year's budget and our funding. So I was pleased that we were able to transfer the amount we did, but again, we have to pull from someplace else to, to make a budget balance. So I would recommend caution in regard to a level of support at this, at this time.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Straight. Bethany, do you have any further, okay? Sheriff, I see the treasurer's office is here. Would, would you all like to come up, or do you have any further report for us? Morning, thank you all for coming.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. As clerks, we concur with what Clerk Straight, everything Clerk Straight said. We had a lengthy meeting this week, which was Friday, and not only has there been pressure in the past to sustain our current county budget, it's our projection that there's, this year again, there's going to be pressure on possibly pulling from reserves to get what's already been budgeted for through the county. So again, we're very confident there's not substantial funds there to be giving out to what's not already been budgeted for. So again, as Clerk Straight mentioned, we'd definitely proceed with great caution on giving out funds outside of what's already been budgeted for.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Trimble, do you have anything to add? All right.
Of course, and it just, you know, of course, Jackie's recently retired, but Jackie and Shirley's been tracking budgets for twenty-plus years, and, and again, we have a very good working relationship with the clerk's office, and we believe that our findings are very accurate, so.
I was going to add a second ago that we do reconcile our results monthly, so we stay closely in touch with each other's regard to the income and outflow of the cash.
Right, and that, I appreciate both offices, and they have done excellent job over the years since I've been here at least. I've noticed that, and again, for the publics to, to understand, that's, that's the way small government, county government works, is the treasurer's office tracks what's deposited, and, and the clerk's office tracks what's, writes the checks, basically, what goes out. And I'm glad to have both, because obviously, that would be a lot for Commissioner Brill, myself, and Commissioner Mance to have to keep track of. So thank you all for the time you put into that and for your recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the floor for discussion for the commission in consideration of the request.
The general public could not hear a thing of the sheriff's. So if, if you could repeat, it would be no.
Okay. Mayor, the sheriff's microphone either wasn't, it does have a green light, but perhaps maybe he wasn't close enough, but I will repeat what the sheriff explained to the commission, and if he wants to correct me, I'll allow him to come up and do so. But basically, the sheriff had a lengthy meeting on Friday. He went over our deposits and our history and our what's to come, and basically, his recommendation is that close to the clerk's office that we proceed with caution in consideration of funds outside of our already budgeted upcoming year and the end of this current year. Sheriff, does that summarize? Could everybody hear me okay? I'm getting head nods, so I would say that's a yes. Okay, again, commissioners, let's discuss this and, and see what we can come up with.
Gentlemen, I, President Eglinger, if I may, I think I've already kind of said my piece at the last meeting. I support the project wholeheartedly, and will continue to do so in whatever capacity I'm able. However, given my obligation to recuse myself from this, you know, vote on the matter, I, I think it's also appropriate for me to punt this over to you two gentlemen to, to sort through this morning. I appreciate the, the leeway and allowing me to do so.
Okay, I'll start out with a few things. I want to say I, I do support the project. I've, I've stated that at least three times now, and I do want to recognize tremendously the tremendous effort of the community to come forth with almost seven hundred thousand dollars towards a one point one million dollar hopeful amount. That, that amount obviously hasn't been confirmed, but, you know, that will be confirmed once bids are put out and so forth. So I don't, I don't want those efforts to go unrecognized. However, the, the amount that was informally suggested, I think, with our current financial situation is, is, is far too much, as one commissioner speaking, and I, and I will give Commissioner Brill time here in just a few minutes. And the reason that, that being is, you know, that an informal amount was put out at our last meeting. Again, I have two county offices that are cautioning, you know, putting caution lights out there for us, and that's what they're here for. Our, our small government here locally works just like the state and federal at a, at a different, you know, at a different amount, obviously, but works in a similar way. So, you know, they, they are here for us to lean upon for that. You know, the, what's been budgeted already has, has been put out there, and that obviously is something we have to always, for any, anything, we have to stay within our, our limits there. You know, and Commissioner Mance brought up at the last meeting that we had said we would go down the road of, of funding EMS to the amounts requested, if, if needed. Some of that's been different. We do have an increase in the fee coming, which is going to help considerably and, and should cover that. However, pulling from our emergency funds, and I call them emergency funds, can be rainy day funds, can be a number of different things that we call that, but basically, it's a savings account that we use to fill in the gaps. And I speak like I'm speaking today, folks, just I want the public to be as, as informed, and I'm trying to keep it as simple and straightforward as I can. Again, it's, that's, that's like a savings account. And the way I commission, ladies and gentlemen, and, and folks of Hampshire County that are listening on YouTube there, the way I commission is, is just like I run my business and, and help my wife to run our family, you know? To pull from savings for an emergency-type item, you know, that might be a health bill or, or, or something like that, or, or pay insurance, or, you know, if, if the regular checking account's getting low, you, you go to the, the savings if you're fortunate enough to have that, which our county has been, for those kind of items. And I look at the EMS for the whole county as one of those kind of items. So yes, we, we did agree to pull those funds if needed for that kind of, of item. But I do want to state that comparatively, I don't feel as one commissioner, that's apples to apples. Pulling those kind of funds out for, and I, and I don't want to just pick on the pool, but for that sort of, of, of project is, is much different, and is not apples to apples when you look at, you know, EMS across the county. And we all know, and our, and our papers even reported on the, the state, the problem and the state of our EMS across the state. It's not a, while in the past, not currently, but while in the past, maybe it was reported that this was a problem particular to Hampshire County. In my opinion, unfair reporting, not what we've seen lately, though, and thank you, Andy. But, you know, again, it's, that's, that's not apples to apples in, in looking at pulling from a fund that is to fill the gaps in an emergency, and we've been fortunate to have that fund. All that being said, I would like to consider a pledge of, of some amount, gentlemen, but it's, in, in my eyes, it's going to have to be considerably less than what was thrown out there last week. I'll stop my discussion, and I'll open the floor for Commissioner Brill for any comments or questions he has.
Thank you, President Eglinger. I just want to start out by saying, again, kudos and thank you to the folks that have worked on this project. It's not an easy feat to set out to raise money. We are fortunate to live in a very giving community, and a lot of folks, when asked, will step up to the plate for a lot of different things all over this county. If you trudge around the county, you'll see lots of instances where things have been accomplished, largely due to the fact that people have stepped up to lead, and then folks have stepped up then to follow suit and to either donate time or donate money. So I was at the event you guys had on Saturday. It looked to be a success, from what I could tell, it was very hot, but turnout was good, and I know you guys have put in a lot of, a lot of time and effort, and to raise the funds you have raised is, is certainly commendable, so I thank you for that. I would agree with President Eglinger that over the course of the last week, week and a half, I've had lots of conversations with folks all over the county regarding this project. As you can imagine, as unfortunately is the case with this county, it's, it's divided to some degree, and not all folk, not all folks are in favor of a pool for the county. And in the conversations I've had, I would agree that there has been folks that have mentioned to me the, the funds that were allocated for emergency services and, and being able to utilize those, and I don't see those two things as equal. While a pool would be great to have for the county, I think it'd be very beneficial to the county, I see that more as a luxury item, as a necessity. Emergency services are absolutely necessary for us to have as a county and for us as county commissioners provide, to, to provide that service to the citizens of the county. And as I've said before, the, the funds raised previously, the work put in, the effort put in by you guys as volunteers and obviously citizens of the county is commendable, and I think that I personally would be fine with having a pool in the county. I think it could be beneficial to the, to the citizens, but I think to the ask, the original ask is, is quite steep. Probably at any given time in this county, if, if you were to ask, there are fifteen to twenty different projects that people could come to us and ask help for all the time, facilities, buildings, projects, things that are going on that could, there's really never, it's never-ending. There are, there are items and things breaking, things happen, opportunities all the time. And so I think that the two hundred thousand dollar request, the ask, is a quite significant amount. I understand certainly the need for and the want to get this project to the finish line sooner than later. Costs, unfortunately, if things don't seem to be going down, maybe, maybe they will. I have my doubts. And so I certainly understand that, but I also think that we as a, as, as a commission and I as one commissioner, obviously, am responsible to the, to the citizens of the entire county and to allocate funds appropriately, utilize the resources that we have available to us to help guide us in making those decisions. Obviously, the sheriff's office, the treasurer's office, and the clerk's office are very important in that regard, and so, you know, I put a lot of faith and trust in what they're telling us, the information they report to us, and I think that it best that we use that information in the best interest of the county. And so that being said, President Eglinger, I would, would be in favor of, of some con- And so that being said, President Eglinger, I would would be in favor of of some contribution to this project, and certainly would be willing to continue to be mindful of this project if it continues, and I'm certain with the work you guys have put in, I'm certain that it will. As the years progress, if we, as a Commissioner, determine that we were to continue to work with this committee, listen to their requests as their requests change, help if able down the road. At this point in time, I think that the the initial request of of $200,000 is just going to be more than we're going to be able to do at this time responsibly as a Commissioner. And I would certainly be open to a discussion of of a different amount if you or Commissioner Mance has one they would like to recommend.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Brill. I'll add just a little more there. Again, I would, I want to support this project, but I have to do it responsibly. Again, the amount of effort and the support from the citizens, I feel the Commission needs to to recognize. At the same time, you know, I have two of our our local government offices here, you know, suggesting caution here, and, you know, I appreciate their straightforwardness in that regard. As you stated, Commissioner Brill, and I know in the past, when I first come on as Commissioner, we would also talk with the the town pool folks and and the Commission, depending on on what it was and how much it was, they they always, at least when I was first started as Commissioner, that they would entertain a, you know, a yearly amount for to help with maintenance and chemicals and and whatever else those type of requests. And I think moving into the future, I would always want us to consider that. But for today, today's discussion, and, you know, again, I've, I'm slated to be responsible and voted into this position to make these hard decisions. There's no way that I've I feel we can do the 200,000. I would suggest another pledge of we had given them $30,000 for the engineering. I would like to follow up with another $30,000. And again, this is going outside of the caution of of two offices here that that support the Commissioners and figuring these things out, but I feel and I have faith moving forward that that we can work to make this happen, and and again, I just, I don't want to make us pool poor. You know, next March, I don't want our folks that come to us for festivals and and different items, and and not only to mention the surprises that we get, you know, we've we've gotten a few surprises just in the past week on our what will be deposited. And, you know, as as that moves on, we'll we'll inform the public of of those things. But, you know, there's there's always surprises. So again, I, even at the caution of of two offices, I would suggest the Commission pledge another $30,000 towards the project. That's not going to be enough to put them over the top. I realize that's what their goal was, but I feel that's all we can responsibly do. And then, again, I think that amount would need to be pledged at this time, and and that should they get their their bids and it be close to the 1.1 million, that then that money could move forward. It wouldn't be a check per se today. So, again, that's only the suggestion of one Commissioner. So, Commissioner Brill, I'll certainly allow you time to respond.
Thank you, President Eglinger. I would agree with a lot of what you said. I realize and understand that this group was hoping that we could be able to pledge enough funds to kind of get them over the top, and and I would agree, it would be great if we could sit here and approve and do everything that everyone asked us to do. I may be young to the Commission, but I have been involved in the county and the and the community for a lot of years, and understand that it's not easy coming to the Commission to ask. It's not easy for the Commission sometimes to have to make the tough decisions, but it's something that has to be done. I, again, you know, the fact that you can can, you have worked hard to raise as many funds as you have to this project, brought that to the table, is very commendable, and to be honest with you, is one of the main reasons why I would, again, be in support of some type of contribution to this project. It is extremely difficult, as we sit here and we have two entities say, to be cautious. And, you know, I think we have to proceed with caution. Again, the pool could be great for the community, but as President Eglinger said, we we certainly don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we are pool poor. As far as an amount goes, you know, coming into this meeting, my thinking was somewhere in line with with what you said, President Eglinger, I was in the realm of $25,000. Based on the fact that we have, this Commission has previously provided $30,000 for the engineering phase of this project, and in hopes that we could find a way to wiggle that $30,000 out of our upcoming budget, I would be in favor of of allocating $30,000 to to this project. Again, largely due to the fact that this group has worked extremely hard to raise the funds they have. Very appreciative of that and very thankful for that time and effort that you have put in. Certainly, you know, I think we will be mindful of this project moving forward, happy to work with you in in any ways that we can. And if there are opportunities down the road that that we could, you know, help more, we certainly will be mindful of that. But again, we have a responsibility to to the citizens of the county. And so, again, I just I just want to make sure you guys understand what we appreciate. I appreciate all the time and effort you have put into getting to this point. There are a lot of folks on your all's committee that have that have put in a lot of time, a lot of you folks I know personally, and I'm certain you're not going to let it stop. I'm certain you'll continue to work. And again, if there are things we can do to help, don't hesitate to ask.
Need that in the form of a motion. That would be appropriate, I would say, Commissioner Brill, if you'd like to make that a motion.
I will make a motion that we allocate $30,000 to the Sink the Pool Fund, provided that the, and allocate those funds once this project has, to get to the point where it is can be completed and fully funded for the first phase.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And the motion is to allocate $30,000, you know, upon confirmation of a price and and that they're able to move forward. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And obviously, Commissioner Mance is is has to abstain. Motion approved. Motion passed. Okay. Any questions from those representing the pool funding request today? If you have a question, you do have to come up to the microphone.
Susan Hallam. I've been here about two years in this community. I've worked hard on this project. I have an ACH going in to give a monthly donation. I have done everything I can possibly do. And let me understand, you said the $30,000 will be allocated once we raise the 1.1 million? Is that what I understood?
Well, we would be we would be willing to write the check. I mean, we would pledge that amount today, but again, if it, depending on how things go moving forward, we wouldn't want to have that money, a check written today for that money, and it sit there. So, basically, you know, in in my opinion, and Commissioner Brill can chime in, is that we do support you with $30,000. However, you know, as we have explained to everybody here today, things are tight, so we're not, we're not going to write the check until we, you know, the confirmation of your all's prices have been confirmed, and and the ladies that presented last week, you know, did signify to us that those weren't, you know, those weren't in stone prices. So if it were to be a $2 million project, you know, we may have to come back and and relook at this.
So, once we raise another $30,000, then you will release a check to the Sink the Pool Fund, correct?
I would I would just say, I think that the way that we intend for this to be is that once this committee has contracted with someone to build this pool, and there is an agreed up on contract price, because it's my understanding right now, the price set forth by Thrasher Engineering is not, they're not going to build it, they're not going to construct it. It's my understanding that there would have to be another company contracted, whether it be through Thrasher Engineering, or if if this committee, this board decided to set out on their own to do it. Once that is in stone and there is a contract in place, and you guys have, would have all the money to be able to pay that contract, our $30,000 pledge is there. I mean, it's part of that, but it's just not going to be allocated until that is in stone. So you can count on it being there, certainly.
Okay, I guess we have a lot more to do.
Any other questions? Come up to the mic, sir.
My name is Duncan Hott, I'm with the City Council in Romney.
How you doing, Mr. Hott?
Fine, you all? So you all want to allocate $30,000? And I know over the years, you all wasn't here then, the swimming pool committee had to come to the county, almost beg for money, you know, and now we're looking at a brand new pool. How much money you all have in that savings account you were talking about? Did you save in a unique case of an emergency? And how much funds is in that?
Right now, we're looking at about that 880. We don't have money just sitting around to pull out. That's the point. The 880,000 that we're transferring into the new budget is what we have to get started. Tax funds aren't going to be coming in until mid-October, mid-August. You know, so our our budget is based on pledges that the taxpayers make to the county in order to provide for the services the county renders. So, in our our estimation, and we look at it very closely, we don't have money that we can hand out. I say we, the Commissioners expend all funds. So, you know, opportunities arise, things look different, they promise to revisit it. So that's the best, best answer I can give you at this point.
So I do think even after, when the pool is built, you all look down the road, maybe of having a standard amount to put in to the swimming pool itself, after it's up and running, or is it all going to be left to the city?
Well, I didn't make the statement, Mr. Hott, that, you know, I, as one Commissioner feel, and and again, you know, the the pool folks will have to come to the Commission, because we can't contract long term. That's state law, is we can't contract, you know, unless it's a huge project that we're working on, that where it takes more than a year to build, by by law, we contract year to year. So, you know, there would have to be a yearly ask from from the pool folks, but I'm I'm in support of of helping with the, you know, the the maintenance, the chemicals, the the summertime help, certainly would consider a a yearly amount. And again, I can't say that it would be every year the same amount, because I can't contract with you long term. But again, I did made that statement in our presentation here 10 minutes ago, that I'm in support of that. It's a pool that, you know, obviously would be used by the folks of Romney and Sunrise surrounding area the most, but it's still a pool open to the county, so I would certainly consider that moving into the future.
I'd just like to throw this out there. Years ago, they did a survey, the pool people and his operating, there was more children coming from the county, not not from the city. But then again, it's all for everybody in Hampshire County, especially in in the kids, you know, and really around here, there's nothing for them to do that much. But you all wouldn't consider raising that 30,000 and more, or that's your final go round?
That's what we voted on today, and and that's what, obviously, two Commissioners feel is is responsible and appropriate as today. You know, if I if I felt more comfortable with where we are, and again, that 800,000 is, right now, is, basically, because we've, and correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk, because you're the one that works in this every day, but, you know, basically, we're not done our regular year yet, and we have to use that money to float us until the taxes come in. So if if I were to give you guys a third or a half of that, we might end up short in August. And I can't responsibly do that as a representative elected by the whole county, you know, twice, that I can't, I can't put us in that position responsibly. Again, if if I felt there was more than enough there, the amount might be more, but today, you know, that's what we voted on.
I would just add, too, that that certainly don't take this or misconstrue this to think that we're not in favor of having things for the the kids of the community to do. No one here, I don't think, is arguing that it would be tremendous to have something like this for the county. It would be great. You know, I would love to have a sports complex in Augusta, in the center part of the county, that the whole county could use, and we could all not have to travel to all these places. But, you know, sometimes those things just aren't achievable. Again, this this got off the ground and is where it is today because of a lot of the hard work and determination of all these folks on this committee, and that is absolutely commendable. It's hard to, you can't turn, in my opinion, just turn a blind eye to that. But as President Eglinger stated, you know, it's our responsibility to ensure we spend the county's money responsibly. And, you know, again, down the road, you know, part of what what I, as one Commissioner, am going to ask of of this project as it continues, is planning for that future. Now, pool is not an easy thing to keep running, to keep operating, the 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 maintenance cost, the chemical cost, you're familiar with that, you know how that goes. And so those are things that, I know we're very, in the early stage of this project, and it's not even not even broken ground yet, but those will be things if and when it gets to the finish line and gets completed. Certainly, questions I will have as one Commissioner is, what is that plan? How do we ensure that it is sustainable and a smart thing for the county? I mean, you know, again, it, I don't want to take anything away from what these folks have done, the money they have raised, the time they have put in, it's it's, I understand how hard that is, and I'm I'm very appreciative of that, and want to continue to work with them on this project. But there will be hard questions, there will be tough decisions that had to be have to be made, so.
I will, I will add, too, Mr. Hott, I think... I will, I will add too, Mr. Hott, I think, and either commissioner can correct me if I'm wrong, but I will say that you do have three commissioners now, with the mindset of, you know, like Commissioner Brill stated, there's nothing, I wouldn't see anything at all wrong with chasing after a dream of a sports complex, centrally located, swimming pools, continuing to fix up the Cape and Bridge recreational end of the, of the old school down there. Those are things, as a commissioner, I would love to see, but I, I'm slated by the people to do it in a responsible manner, and do it in a way that we can also continue our basic operations. And so, again, I really hope, you know, after, at least I feel, as one commissioner, we've went out on a limb here, although it's not as far as you folks wanted us to go, we've still went above and beyond what two of our offices are suggesting. So I hope we don't go out of here with a notion that we're non-supportive. I feel we're being as supportive as we can responsibly be today.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I want to be sure you all get, get questions.
I don't have a question, but I have a statement.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Do you want me to come forward?
Yep, we want to make sure everybody can hear.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for your gesture. I do appreciate it. But I do want to say one thing. I do not want you to think this gesture is helping the town of Romney. The records show that 75 to 80% of the people that use the pool in the past come from outside the boundaries of the town of Romney. This is further exemplified by those who have helped us get this far. Take a look. They're your constituents. They don't live in the town of Romney. Yes, a few of them do. But by and large, they've come from the county, because they see this as an effort to give something back to the children, a sport that they can pursue lifetime, and a place that they can play in the summertime. So I just don't want you to think that you are helping out the town of Romney. This truly is a county effort. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would agree, it is, it is a county effort. And my statement five minutes ago, that it would largely be folks of Romney and surrounding areas, and I don't, I didn't mean that particularly to the town. But again, you know, it will be located, hopefully located, in the town of Romney, and I have no problem with that. But I just, I wanted to be clear that, you know, folks from Yellow Springs and Green Springs would not use it as much as Romney, Sunrise, Purgatsville, et cetera. That's to clarify my statement, I was not in any way meaning town of Romney exclusively.
No, I did, I did not take it that way. But I just, I just want to make sure that this is not an effort or to, to help with the town of Romney. Because this is truly, you know, when you mention those other communities within the county, there's also Springfield, and there's also Augusta, and a lot of children come from these places to swim. So it's, it's truly, you can look at the, at the citizens of Romney and find that there are very few children. So this is a county effort. And again, it's represented by the people that are here, and these are your constituents. So I thank you for this. I do hope that we can work further in the future, something maybe low-interest loan, a no-interest loan. And also, something set up, I know you said that we, that you can't obligate yourself beyond a year, nor can the town of Romney obligate themselves beyond a year. But there are things that we could ask that you put in your budget for next year. It is humbling to have to come back every year and ask for funds for the pool, for the maintenance, the operation. And we have done so in the past, and Mr. Eglinger, I'm sure you remember, many times coming back, and the answer sometimes was no. So I think the only way to assure that there is some kind of help going forward with this county project is to be placed in the budget somehow, as an item. Okay?
Just a correction, Mayor, I remember one time, the answer was no. Sometimes the answer, most of the time the answer, at least while I was here, was yes, or it was a modified amount. But I remember one time, it was no.
Yes. Well, that's during my, my time too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask for one more question, if there's, if not, we'll move on.
President Eglinger, if I may?
Okay.
Gentlemen on the commission, and all of our county staff that worked on this, and everybody in the room, this is a difficult thing to work through. So thank you for everybody that put in the time, and, you know, kept the demeanor professional as we did work through this. And, you know, although everybody might not be completely in agreement with, you know, where we're at right now, I think we can all agree that this is a step forward. And you are sitting there in a room with three commissioners that are in favor of this project and projects like it. So, all I'll do is call for us to redouble ourselves to our effort to manage our budget as effectively and efficiently as possible, so that we can regenerate or revisit the opportunities to contribute to projects like this in the county, when it is responsible for us to do so, and when our team evaluates that it's responsible for us to do so. So, that's where my efforts will be placed. And thank you, everybody in the room, for, you know, getting us through this next step forward. I'm wearing up.
Okay. We are definitely running a little behind. We need to go to animal control director position job description.
I put this on the agenda so we could have a minute to talk about it. We had, Sheriff and I have looked at some options. I found the standard operating procedures that were established essentially by Colonel G., and adopted by the commission in 2014, which includes a job description for the facilities director. And since we have a committee assigned to conduct interviews shortly of those applicants that have submitted by the end of this week, our deadline is the 18th. We also had sent you a copy of something from Georgia. It was a pretty comprehensive document, and I just wanted to get that on your radar as well, to look over that and give us any suggestions you might have, as to how you would like to see this job structured, if different than what we have in our standard operating procedures. Again, Commissioner Eglinger, President Eglinger's assigned the sheriff, myself, and himself as our interview committee, and we look forward to reviewing those applications and moving forward. But I was going to ask if the commission would be willing to allow us as a committee to kind of present or modify and present a job description for circulation and considerations as we move through this process.
Okay, thank you, clerk. I do think that's a good idea, clerk, that we, prior to, you know, as we come upon the deadline for the applicants, that we form a short meeting with the committee members, again, which is myself, sheriff, and clerk straight. I think it would be wise for us to look over that information that you have, and present something to the full commissioners' board as well. So, I can get with you guys after the meeting, but I would be thinking something early next week. I will say, gentlemen, I'm, I am spoken for to the max the rest of this week, for my commission stuff and my farm. So, this week would be hard for me, unless it's later Friday, but either very latest part of this week or early next week, if we could meet and look at the stuff that you're referring to there.
In the meantime, perhaps we can circulate some things by email and have that, you know, addressed individually, and then in our minds, and then come together, yes, if that worked.
Sheriff, did you have?
I'm available to receive my fair.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll have to look at the times of when me and the sheriff, both are busy, but I, it would be hard for me to get it done this week, guys, I'm.
Fair enough.
Maybe Friday.
Also bear in mind that after the fair, the commissioners' training, that you have reservations for, would be, I guess, the following week, I believe. No, week after that. I'll be on vacation the following week, that's. So, we're going to have some conflicts, but we can work it out.
Okay. Commissioner Brill, Commissioner Mance, you have any further concerns or comments on the animal control director?
None for me. I trust the judgment of the subcommittee, so whatever you guys want to decide, line up, and then come back to us with, I'll be ready to hear it.
Agreed. Thank you, gentlemen, for offering to do that for us.
Okay, we'll make it a consensus then, clerk, that we, that me, you, and sheriff get together on a date here in the next seven to eight days, or to look at those items.
And certainly, if there's anything I can do to help in the interim, I'm more than happy to help if need be, any way I can.
Yeah. I'll, we'll get back with you here in the next day or two, Eric, on a definite time. Okay, discussion on and possible response to letter from NextEra Energy on the transmission project. And Commissioner Mance, I know you drafted a letter and sent it to Commissioner Brill and myself for review. The clerk has a copy here today, so I'll open the floor for you to expand there, any if you like, at this time.
Yep, much appreciated, President Eglinger. Just to introduce the topic, I think it was June 26th, we three commissioners received a letter from Evan Jaeger, president of NextEra Energy. The letter was professional and well-toned enough, indicating that, you know, he was eager to solicit input, tried to convey that he had been soliciting input, or NextEra had been soliciting input, from Hampshire County citizens in regard to the transmission project. Very quick, very quickly, the letter turned to the tax benefits for the county. The letter cites that the county stands to receive in total between 100 and 125 million projected over the life of the project, which it also quotes as estimated as 2.5 to 3.125 million a year in tax revenue for the county. What my assessment on this letter is, is that, one, these figures are not concrete in any regard. This is something that I've seen in other instances, in which a potential project will kind of dangle the amount of tax revenue that is projected for a project in order to woo those regulators, which might have the ability to create impediments or to enable a project forward. And that's what I took this letter as. What I did see, though, was an opportunity for us as a commission to leverage the potential tax revenue to get what we want out of the project. So when we put forward our resolution stating our position as a county commission, we called for alternative designs to the project, specifically that the project be undergrounded along our highways and public rights of way. The tax revenues that are projected here are, you know, they're not insignificant, they're not concrete, but they're not insignificant. And I thought that this was an opportunity for us to write back to the president of the, of NextEra Energy, the developer for the project, and call on him and his company to, you know, put their money where their mouth is, and design the project the way that it actually works for our county. So, what I did is I drafted a letter which pretty much says that. It says, you know, we as a county value our landscapes, our valleys, our farms, and the people that cherish them more than we value any amount of money. And, you know, our position is firm in that regard. However, we are here to discuss the ways in which we could work with NextEra, see a project move forward only if it works for us. So it calls on NextEra to leverage the available tax incentive tools that are available through state code, to come to us with an alternative, and not an overhead design, but an undergrounded design for the project, which, you know, could satisfy both, you know, some of our economic development goals, and NextEra's goal of energy transmission, along with our primary goal of preserving our viewscapes for, you know, our residents and our residents into the future. So that's a long way of introducing the letter, but it pretty much says those things. We see, you know, that there's a lot of potential tax revenue that's being discussed here, however, we're not for sale. But if NextEra wants to talk about doing the project the way that it works for Hampshire County, we're here to talk to you and work with you, and we'll put our, you know, put some skin in the game as well, and talk about tax incentives to do the project the way that we want. Gentlemen, I'm happy to discuss the letter any further. You guys have had a chance to review it. I think that that's a pretty decent summary of the topic. But, like I said, my proposal was that we, you know, pin this as a commission, and then send it back, and then essentially put the ball back in NextEra's court, and come back with us, or come back to us with something that we like versus something that we don't like, which is the current proposal. So, turn it back over to you gentlemen.
So, gentlemen, obviously, we have, as a commission, agreed to not go along with the current proposal, you know, whether that's forced upon us or not, but we've chosen as a commission not to go along with the current proposal of a line through our county and neighboring counties. So I wouldn't be in opposition to this letter either. That's all I have.
I'll just add, Commissioner Mance, thank you for taking the time in putting this letter together for us, and then also summarizing it. I do believe, I find it to be appropriate, and in line with the resolution that we have already agreed upon as a commission, and have no issue pinning this and sending it back to NextEra Energy's president, Mr. Jaeger.
And I guess before we vote, gentlemen, I'll just, Commissioner Mance, you've done some research on this, probably more than I have thus far, but do you know of any examples of that high-voltage system type system that's underground, anywhere in, I guess in North America?
Yeah, there, there are. There's a really, really big one up in New York, there's a couple out west, there are smaller projects that are in northern Virginia. So there's plenty of examples, and especially if you go out, you know, worldwide. It's a technology that does exist, but there are viable examples in North America and the United States. And this letter actually, I think, references a couple of them. These folks all know about that too, they just, they want the smoothest and the easiest path. I think that this letter is, you know, part of the goal is to say, there is no easy path here to overhead lines. But we're here to talk to you if, you know, you've got another idea. But there is, there is ample evidence of the undergrounding technology being viable. President Eglinger.
Yep. I, you didn't mention that in your summary, and so I just wanted to make that clarification for folks. So would we entertain a motion at this time on the, on the subject?
I'll make a motion that we, if you'd like to, go ahead, Commissioner Mance.
No, no, please, please do. Commissioner Brill, I'm sorry for the delay.
I'll just make a motion that we sign the response letter to NextEra Energy in response to the letter we received from Mr. Jaeger at the end of June.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, that we allow me to sign the transmission, NextEra Transmission Project Letter, Response Letter. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. We have that, we have the original, I thought I gave it to the letter head. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mance, I put that on letterhead this morning and did not scan you that one, but I did scan you the one to Mr. Forrest, so.
Look, thank you.
And I, I guess I'll need to point out, point of order here, gentlemen, I don't know whether we want to amend the motion, but I see this, this letter in particular is from all three of us, so.
Well, the motion was that the commission signed the letter.
Okay, okay, I, maybe I just said the President, so we're, we're all right then. I just wanted to make sure we had that technicality covered because it is all three of us on this one.
Gentlemen, I had a question since you've accomplished it, the business is done. Should we, seems like most of this communication's happening by email. Putting it in, in, an envelope and sticking it in the mail may not be our most assured way of the, the gentleman at Next Era, at Next Era getting it. What's your consideration on that?
How about a, an email with the attached letter followed up by the official letter in the mail?
Excellent.
Does that, does that sound good, gentlemen?
Sounds good.
I like it.
So, because we had the, and I'm stepping in, I'm sorry, we had the idea of communication with the folks at Pentacapital Partners, Commissioner Mance had sent a letter there in that regard and I put that on letterhead as well because the emails indicated that there was an interest in responding to them and the sheriff wanted to make sure I reminded you that we are, they are in arrears, Genesis is in arrears to the tune of one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars as stated in the letter, the months are specified. And we also have received official notice from the bankruptcy court of North Texas that Genesis Healthcare LLC has filed for Chapter eleven bankruptcy. What in fact that has on us, we don't really know and you've seen the same headlines and stuff I have probably, that apparently they're trying to get out from under some liabilities that occurred regarding COVID or something, but what does that mean for us? We don't know and the letter, I think, not that I have anything in it, but expresses that question to them very well. So, I wanted to, since it's a current topic and a topic that we've been carrying from the last meeting, it's not on the agenda, but all this developed since the agenda was posted and I'll put that letter on letterhead if you want to proceed with it.
Yes, gentlemen, I, you know, the, the entire nursing home communication processes, I, I feel as President is a, is a approved process that we've all been willing to discuss and with the, with the current latest, very, very recent changes, I, I would find it appropriate that we continue those communications in a timely manner. So, I, I as one commissioner, gentlemen, wouldn't have a problem with communication in form of a letter at this time, although it's not on the agenda. Again, it's, I, I feel that it's, it's ongoing communication and, you know, sometimes to do things in a timely manner, you do have to go through the process in this way.
My only comment in regards to this, gentlemen, is that I think the letter that's before us would be well-suited coming from President Eglinger as a representative, individual representative of the commission and then what I was going to ask you gentlemen, you know, just your thoughts on was actually reaching out directly to Genesis Healthcare. If you guys are all right with me doing that, I can, you know, get more information and have it back and ready for us to process in the near future as well as we kind of navigate whether or not we're going to need to retain counsel as well. We might not need to at this point, but my goal is to, you know, gain information that would allow us to make more informed decisions in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mance, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Again, I, I feel that this is ongoing business that we have to attend to, so I would be fine with that.
Yeah, and I would agree, these are, this time seems to be of the essence here, things are moving rather quickly and I don't think we want to get behind. I'm in agreement with both of, moving forward with both of these actions, given the fact that, again, it's been ongoing communications and, and an item that's pretty important to the county.
So, I have a, I have a copy on letterhead.
So, gentlemen, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and sign this and we will be sure, Clerk, that we put this on the agenda next time for informational purposes and as a catch-up for the public on informational and, and, and some of this stuff too is, you know, I will have to sort through what's, what is, what is out, you know, needs to be presented and what, what can't be presented. I know there is some, there may, there may be some code that says some of this type of stuff has to be, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the word is, but there, there is protections for.
Yeah, President Eglinger, if I may, Augma protections for executive session for the discussion and disposition of real property. So, your, your instincts are right, President Eglinger, there are, you know, considerations and exceptions for, for this matter.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to present there, but I, I'm going to go ahead and sign the letter. We're not going to do a motion because I, you know, it's not on the agenda, but it's ongoing business, so I will sign the letter and, and ask Clerk Strite to forward it to the correct representatives.
I, on that discussion, I have one other question. It's from long, long ago, I don't know if it still pertains, but in a previous career, I worked for a lender and anytime we spoke to someone who was in arrears on payments and they indicated in any way that they may be filing for bankruptcy or had filed for bankruptcy, we had to say, hey, have a good day, goodbye, and that was all you could say. So, I just throw that out there because that's in the back of my mind. I know I'm not qualified to discuss any of this, but just a question I had and I wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I, I intend to sync up with you as we craft that, that initial conversation with Genesis.
Got it. All right, gentlemen, nothing else on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the commission adjourned their special meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.